...and improving service to the operational forces of the Pacific Fleet. Captain Aubrey's exceptional stewardship garnered the station numerous awards, most notably the Station Selection, a Small Installation of the Year for 2011. Captain Aubrey, if you'll join me up front, we have a plaque to present.
So, a few of these things I'm gonna say at my retirement ceremony, which is not this Friday, but next Friday on the 22nd. I'm gonna talk about, you know, things that supported, you know, the best place I can in my Navy career at, which is here at Still Beach. And one of the things I'm certainly gonna say again for you all to do attend, is not only the accomplishments for the people and the installations, but the community, which has been absolutely superb. That was one of the big surprises. I came from the state of Texas, and Texas is well-known for their support from the military. And I didn't really know what to expect when I came to California. But when you come to a community like this here, and a community like Still Beach, it just wraps our arms, you know, around the military and supports them in a very positive way, taking care of their sailors, and doing all the great things, and working together, it's just been a tremendous blessing. So, I thank you for this, and I'll take this back, but thank you for the friendship and relationship over these last three years. Thank you.
Now, we have the Orange County Transportation Authority, have an update with Christina Byrne, Community Relations Officer and Mid-City Manager. Did you want to add to this?
I don't, other than I know Christina's here. I believe she's gonna be covering or touching on both projects, if I'm not mistaken, the West County Connectors project and the 405 widening. Christina?
Thank you. Mayor Levitt and councilmembers, it's my pleasure to be here this evening to update you on both projects. I'll also be introducing this evening two new employees that are working on the West County Connectors project, and that is Sarah Swenson and Dennis Mock. And Sarah is taking over my duties as the lead community relations representative for the West County Connectors project, as I'm transitioning full-time to the 405. And Dennis will be assisting as the new project manager on the West County Connectors project. So, you'll be seeing a lot more of them around town. Before I get started, I just wanted to thank your council for your support and collaboration over the last couple of years, especially your city manager and your city public work staff and their presence every week at our traffic management meetings, where we coordinate all of our activities that may potentially impact each other, and then make sure that we do whatever we can to lessen the impacts to the traveling public and the residents in the community. So, I really appreciate their time and effort in doing so. We have a very important milestone on the near horizon, and that's next Monday. We will be completely reopening the Valley View Street Bridge. Over the weekend, we completed it, we successfully completed a 55-hour closure to do some additional paving and re-striping to get the bridge where it should be to reopen it to motorists fully this coming Monday. And that's a photo of that effort that took place over the weekend. And once Valley View Street is complete, our next major milestone will be Still Beach Boulevard. We weren't able to begin work on Still Beach Boulevard until Valley View Street is complete. And right now, we're scheduled to start work on Still Beach Boulevard mid-July, so after the 4th of July holiday. It will be a 23-month reconstruction period. The first stage of construction, the first 11 months, is when the bridge will be down to one lane in either direction with an emergency services median. That, what that means is that median will be solely for the purpose of emergency services personnel to get to and from either side of the bridge. And then in stage two, we'll restore the bridge to two lanes in each direction for approximately a 12-month duration. And the final bridge will be complete in 2014 with four lanes northbound and three lanes southbound. The next couple of slides walk you through how that staging will occur. We're constructing the west side of the bridge first, so once, when the west side of the bridge is under construction, traffic will be on the east half of the bridge. And that will be where the one lane is in either direction, plus the center median for emergency use only. Once that newly constructed west half of the bridge is complete, traffic will be shifted to that side of the bridge, and there will be, again, two lanes in each direction across the bridge and over the 405 freeway. Then we'll begin reconstructing the east half of the bridge and tie it all together. This slide is, looks a little funny because it doesn't look widened on either side of the bridge, but as you know, the city has partnered with us to make sure that those widening enhancements are from intersection to intersection once we're complete. There will be some interactive detour maps, and there will also be some staged construction renderings on our website as we get closer. That first stage, when we are one lane in either direction with the emergency median, we will have a graphic on our website, it's not quite ready yet, that will step-by-step walk the public through how that will be staged. The alternate routes that we're encouraging the public to use while Still Beach Boulevard is down to one lane in either direction, is to use Lampton Avenue, Westminster Avenue, Sudabaker, Valley View Street, pretty much to avoid the area as much as possible, and use Valley View now that it will be restored to capacity. This, these are also the same routes that will be recommended when we do have periodic closures of Still Beach Boulevard at night, usually between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM, for us to do some demolition activities, and then also false work installation and other miscellaneous work that must be done at night for safety reasons, and usually because we have to close the 405 freeway underneath the bridge. But those will be not as frequent as, it will be pretty much the same in frequency as when Valley View was closed overnight for a few nights to do the reconstruction there. And when those are scheduled, we'll be sure that our emergency services personnel and everyone in the community knows far in advance. We have had a pretty robust outreach program getting ready for the Still Beach Bridge work, in addition to city council briefings like we have this evening. We, this morning, had emergency services briefing where we brought in personnel from all the neighboring emergency services organizations, including the Still Beach PD, to make sure they're briefed and comfortable with what we're proceeding with on Still Beach Boulevard. We have email alerts that go out as a regular course of business, business briefings for any businesses located on Still Beach Boulevard, media relations canvassing door-to-door to the extent possible in the area, and then our automated calls will go out as well, as they do with most major outreach activities. This is a list of all the organizations that we are coordinating with on an ongoing basis for Still Beach Boulevard specifically, but we're also working with them throughout the project to make sure they're informed as construction progresses. We have three other major closures that are coming up on the horizon, the eastbound 22 to southbound 405 connector, that will be a 12-day closure scheduled later this summer. The northbound 405 to northbound 605 connector, that will be a 55-hour closure for two to three consecutive weekends this summer as well. And then the eastbound 22 to northbound 405 connector, and that's coming out of Long Beach for approximately 12 months for that work. One of the major closures that many people in this area have been especially interested in is the tunnel closure, the southbound 605 to southbound 405 connector closure. And I'm really happy to report that this particular activity will happen after the first stage of construction on Still Beach Boulevard. It will be once the bridge is restored to two lanes in either direction, sometime at least later this calendar year, at the earliest. So, we are coordinating with our contractor, we've got them to commit at this point to that particular scheduling for the project. So, the Still Beach Boulevard work will begin after the 4th of July holiday, but not until that bridge is restored to two lanes in either direction, will work commence on the connector closure. And at that point, basically, the bridge would be back to where it is currently. While the tunnel closure is underway, there are some alternate routes that we'll be promoting as we get closer to that timeframe. And those would be to get people off the 605 freeway as early as possible, and then proceed down to reconnect with the southbound 405. This will be a regional effort, we will be partnering with our folks and counterparts in LA County, our colleagues at the District 7 in Los Angeles, as well as LA Metro, and all the motorists, of course, that live in and work in the LA County region, to make sure that they're aware of this closure when it does take place. General Still Beach, City of Still Beach outreach is as follows. We work very closely with Leisure World, always making sure that they're updated on the status of the project, as well as the Chamber and other business organizations. We do tremendous door-to-door outreach, just making sure our businesses are in the know with what's going on with the project. And then throughout the summer months, we typically partner to have booths at concerts in the park, the car shows, and what have you, in addition to our regular media relations that we have for all cities in the project corridor. And for more information, there's Sarah Swenson's information, as well as our general project information. And I'd, if you prefer, I can take questions in between each presentation before I move on to the 405, if that makes the most sense.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Yeah, Christina, I was curious, one thing, will all the on-ramps and off-ramps still be functioning with the first phase, with one lane in each direction and the emergency in the middle? Will you still be able to get on the freeway in the same locations and off the same locations?
That is my understanding during the first stage of construction on Still Beach. I do know, I do know there will be some work on the Still Beach Boulevard ramps. I'm not sure what, as far as duration is concerned, but I don't believe that would take place during the first stage of construction when it's one lane in either direction, but we can confirm that for you and let you know.
Okay. And when will the first lanes actually be taken out of the current bridge? Will they be taken out immediately, or will they be taken out in a month or two when they've got some of the preparatory work, preparation done?
My understanding, and this will be one of the first items that we do once we start work on Still Beach Boulevard. You have seen that we do have some dirt embankment that has been settling for quite some time on either side of the bridge right now. But I believe in order for us to get working as quickly as possible on the bridge, we probably will start scheduling demolition activities for the half of the bridge we need to work on.
And you'll be working all night?
When we do demolition, we do have to work all night. Other activities are primarily during the day, but whenever we do have night activities, we'll be sure to notify the surrounding neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Did I understand that the eastbound 22 is going to be closed for 12 months going on to the 405?
Let me go back. There's two connector closures coming out of 7th Street onto the eastbound 22 that will take place. One is a 12-month closure, and that's to the northbound 405. It has a rather low volume on that connector, only about 3,000 cars a day. And then the southbound 405 connector is an at-grade connector, the one that runs along Leisure World to the southbound 405.
And what is the best way, then, if you, if this is closed, what are you recommending for the alternates for that?
For the eastbound 22 to southbound 405 connector, it's essentially the reverse of when 7th Street was closed. So, you would go ahead and take Sudabaker south to Westminster, and then reconnect with Still Beach Boulevard.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. On to the second one.
All right. Thank you very much. I am the Community Relations Officer assigned to the 405 Improvement Project, and Neil Barrett is our project manager. I'm sure many of you remember him from presentations in the past. He recently just had his second child and other sons, so that's why he's not here with me this evening, but I will do my best to follow in his footsteps and give an overview on the project. The 405 corridor overlaps with the West County Connectors area here at the 405-605 interchange, and then traverses all the way down 14 miles down the 405 freeway to the 73. And that is the study area that we have as a part of the 405 Improvement Project. It currently, unlike the West County Connectors, which is currently in construction, the 405 is still in the fairly early planning stages. We are still in the environmental planning stage for this project. And right now, we've had a series of public hearings, we've had three already, one last week here in Still Beach and Rossmore, and we have our last public hearing coming this Thursday in the city of Fountain Valley. This particular corridor has one of the highest average daily traffic in the nation, certainly in Orange County, especially the portion that overlaps with the West County Connectors. This slide depicts the study area, the quarter-mile radius, which we mailed a postcard to, is depicted in blue on this slide. So, those are the folks that we actively reached out to to make sure they're engaged in this process, and participate by providing public comment or attending one of our public hearings. We have our public review period that extends from May 18th to July 2nd, so we're soliciting feedback from the community about all three build alternatives and the no-build alternative that are currently under consideration. Once we receive all those comments, we will look at them closely, and our Board of Directors this summer will pick a locally preferred alternative to move forward into funding. And we will work closely with Caltrans to then pick an alternative to include in the final environmental document, which is slated for April of 2013. So, in between now and then, Caltrans and OCTA will be closely evaluating all input that we receive, we received during the public comment period to make sure it's adequately reflected in the final document and responded to. And then in between April of 2013 and the start of construction, which we anticipate to be approximately 2015, we will be putting together the bid package for the construction of that project. We will have a request for proposals, requests for qualifications, and go through that process in order to hire a contractor. We're anticipating the project to be design-build, and so we'll be going through that procurement process as we lead up to design and construction between 2015 and 2019. This slide shows the existing condition, particularly on the Springdale Bridge. And right now, I'm gonna go through just very quickly the three alternatives under consideration. This existing condition here at Springdale shows you where the columns are located on the bridges. All bridges between Bolsachica and potentially Fairview will be reconstructed as a part of the 405 Improvement Project. Where those columns are located, unfortunately, are right in the middle of where you would want to add new lanes on the 405 freeway. So, every single interchange, or, excuse me, every single overcrossing between Bolsachica and Fairview would need to be reconstructed, even if we were to add one lane in each direction, which is the first alternative that we're considering along the 405. The second alternative under consideration is adding two general-purpose lanes in each direction, and both of which would be within, generally within existing right-of-way. There are some partial acquisitions of business and residential property, and four, full, excuse me, up to four full business acquisitions as a part of the three build alternatives that are under consideration. Those three, up to four, those four are actually located in the city of Fountain Valley. And then the third alternative under consideration is to add, not only the one general-purpose lane that was committed to as a part of Measure M, which all three alternatives are, do include, but it adds a second lane in the center of the 405 freeway between the 605 and the 73 to operate with the existing carpool lane to be a two-lane express facility similar to the 91 freeway. This project, and we worked very, very closely over the last 10 years that this project has been studied, to make sure that we minimize impacts to right-of-way to the extent possible. There are no full residential acquisitions as a part of the project, however, there are the full, up to four business acquisitions that I mentioned previously. The project does include several sound walls, and there are some sound walls that are new as a part of the project, and also some that will be replaced. I wanted to go through and include a little bit more information about Almond Avenue, since I know that was a considerable concern to some of the residents that did attend the community of Rossmore and Still Beach public hearing last week. Alternative one, in the boards that were depicted at the, excuse me, at the, at the public hearing last week, I want, there was some confusion on whether there were any impacts to alternative one. There are no impacts to any of the sound walls as a part of alternative one for the Almond Avenue area. As a part of alternative two, there are two areas that there are impacts along Almond Avenue, and two areas where there are no impacts. Primarily, this slide is to show you how much further we would be potentially encroaching onto Almond Avenue. There is an existing six-foot utility easement along this stretch of Almond Avenue, and so where there is a two-foot mark and a five-foot mark, we would be encroaching into Almond Avenue approximately up to two feet and five feet in these two particular areas, above and beyond the existing six-foot utility easement. And then the two areas where there are no impact, that means the sound wall would not move at all, and we would not be encroaching into Almond Avenue. Under alternative three, there are three areas where there would be no impact, which means there would be no encroachment into Almond Avenue and no impact on the sound wall itself. And then two areas where we would be moving into Almond Avenue, a four-foot area, where we would go four feet beyond the existing utility easement, potentially into Almond Avenue, and then another smaller location where we would go beyond the six-foot utility easement, potentially up to two feet into Almond Avenue. All of this information is available on the Caltrans website. The environmental document is located there, as well as at OCTA. We have links to the document on our website, as well as a hard copy at OCTA and Caltrans, and all the local libraries, even here in Still Beach, there is a hard copy of the environmental document. I brought with me this evening some comment sheets. If you would like to fill out a comment sheet and mail it in, you're more than welcome to do so, to the address provided here, or attend our public hearing in Fountain Valley later this week and provide a verbal comment. We also have an email address that you'd be able to provide a comment to as well. And we've had four public hearings, well, we will have had four public hearings in total, three of which occurred last week, and then our last one, as I mentioned, is later this week on the 14th, at 6 o'clock at the Fountain Valley Senior Center. There is a time-certain presentation at 6:30, where we will expand upon what I've shared this evening, and delve in a little bit more into the project itself. And then for more information, you can, of course, follow us on Facebook, or visit our project website at OCTA, or the Caltrans website. And with that, I just remind you that the public comment is through July 2nd, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I have one question. If I'm driving northbound on the 405 in a carpool lane...
Yes.
And I approach this area where you have alternative three, if I'm not a transponder owner, if I don't have three people in the car, am I then forced to get out of the diamond lane?
Anyone that's, that's a single occupants driver, or two people in the vehicle, they will be paying a toll. If you're three-plus, it will be free for the foreseeable future. If you were to exit, if you're on northbound 405, and you're wanting to exit at Still Beach Boulevard, it's my understanding that you would need to exit at Bolsa, Golden West, and then be able to merge out into the lanes to be able to, the regular general-purpose lanes, to be able to exit at Still Beach Boulevard. That would be the northern ingress and egress or access point on the toll facility, unless you continued on the 405 and transitioned to the 605 and exited at Cotella, and then came back down Still Beach Boulevard to the community of Still Beach.
All right. So, have you had this groundswell of requests for a toll lane in there? Because this seems to just thwart the entire reason for having a carpool lane.
We are looking at all alternatives equally. We've had some concerns from some of the cities regarding the toll facility, and we're encouraging those to have those concerns, to make sure they include those as part of the public comment process.
Oh, I will, yeah.
Can I bounce off of that?
Sure.
Certainly. So, what I'm looking at in your alternative three is that you have two lanes in either direction that you're calling express lanes. Why wouldn't you consider keeping one carpool and having one express lane?
I believe operationally, we did look at that, but unfortunately, it fell out as one of the alternatives that we considered earlier. I don't know, Neil, if you would want to add any information to that?
From a management perspective, it would be difficult to enter and exit.
Would you mind coming to the mic, because the people at home can't hear that?
My name is Neil Veno, and I'm with the Parsons Corporation. We're consultants working for OCTA on this project. The answer to your question is that if you maintain them as essentially two separate types of lanes, it would be difficult, for example, if you had the general-purpose lanes on the outside, and then the carpool lane, and then the express lane, you could not have any intermediate access to the express lane, because you would, by definition, then have to enter and exit the express lane by crossing the carpool lane. And if you've only got one person in the car using the express lane, you would be violating the HOV eligibility requirement. So, you can see, and if you swap the lanes and put the HOV in the center and the express on the outside, you have similar problems. So, operationally, it just doesn't work well.
All right. Thank you.
Neither does this one. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, when you say two feet into Almond, the parkway itself is two feet, does that mean you're just gonna move to the edge of the curb, or are you gonna go two feet down the parkway?
My understanding is there's a six-foot utility easement, so we're moving the six feet, and then we would encroach two feet into Almond Avenue.
So, you're actually moving the wall eight feet?
Correct.
I just, it sounded much better than I originally heard before. Back to, before on alternative one, you were still gonna come into College Park East. You're saying now the latest design is you're not coming into College Park East at all?
My understanding is we're not moving the wall at all under alternative one.
And when you have four feet as one of your numbers here for the alternative three, is that really, that's the 10 feet?
That's correct. You add, correct, you would add the four-foot utility, excuse me, the six-foot utility.
I thought things were better than I thought before. So, this is what we've been thinking, Sean?
Yes.
Okay. The other is, one of the questions, it's kind of like what Mike said, I mean, I've talked to a couple of the other cities that are adjacent but not right on the corridor, and they're concerned about the alternatives. And it seems to me that really the alternatives are just gonna be decided by OCTA and Caltrans, because you're not really getting public input from the greater community of Orange County. I mean, you're getting input from those adjacent to the freeway, but not the people that really use it every day, all the people.
Mayor Proton Miller, we've been running ads up and down the corridor in the Orange County Register, which is read by all residents in Orange County, as well as other widely circulated publications. We're not only receiving comments from those that live along the corridor, we're encouraging anyone in Orange County or otherwise.
So, you will consider comments on the alternatives?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And the other one is, I hope that, as you know, and as some of the people in College Park East know, that Still Beach is trying to develop alternatives that won't require the wall to be moved, so I hope that you'll carry back the idea that we hope that OCTA and Caltrans will work with Still Beach in their best effort to make, in our best efforts to make that wall not be moved if possible.
Yes, sir.
And the other, final thing, it's off this topic, before you leave the West County Connectors project, would you make sure everybody knows that Lampton 405 wall needs to go a little further?
It will be, sir, yes.
Thank you.
The west half of the project will be continuing that wall to the Still Beach Boulevard off-ramp.
That looks very nice now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right. No, thank you very much. Very informative. I think we're moving on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject-mattered jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to staff and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk. Anyone who, well, hello Patty?
Already here. Good evening. Patty Campbell, College Park East. Gary pulled that item C on the median improvements to Lampton. I wanted to address the one issue that's my own contention, that's the K-rail down the center. I lived up against Lampton, as you know, for 42 years, and during that time, we've seen the result of some pretty bad accidents. Too many of them have resulted in fatalities. It didn't get its stain dead man's curve for nothing. Requesting a safety barrier down the median of Lampton, in the stretch between Candleberry and Heather, and the sooner the better. About 10 years ago, a traffic count was done on Lampton, and it was 17,000 vehicles a day. I'm sure it's gone way, way up, especially since we've had this project with Valley View, and now it's gonna be Still Beach Boulevard. It's not gonna get any better. You know, we're dealing with, you know... You know, we're dealing with, you know, road rage has become a significant traffic problem and add stress and frayed nerves from the gridlock traffic, and we've got an even bigger problem. We may not be able to protect people from themselves, but we can certainly protect the residents and oncoming traffic from speeders and, in some case, drunk speeders by keeping traffic that's on its own side of the wall, on its own side of the road. Gary pulled Items T because he's looking at the whole landscaping project. This is just one part of it, the K-rail, and I would request that this be, I've talked a lot with Gary, that this be approved. The sooner we get this thing up, the better. And secondly, the second safety improvement is for some type of a traffic light on the crosswalk by Marina Center where it crosses over to the other side by the school Autism Partnership. It's, the teachers there take the children across the street over to the park at Marina Center, and they've had more than their close call of, more than their share of close calls for drivers. They either won't stop or sometimes don't even slow down. A traffic light, one that would, not a regular one that's timed, but one where you would push a button to make it turn green or make it turn red, that's what I'd like to request. That's my first choice. Another thing that we looked at is one that would be a flashing red light only when you activated it. Because if you put a stop sign, people are going to just blow through it. If you put a stop sign and a flashing red light, are ticketable. If you put a flashing yellow light, they're not going to stop for that over time. That's my concern, okay? One of the things my daughter told me today, which I wasn't aware of, is that traffic deaths are the second largest cause of deaths in autistic children, with water accidents being the first largest cause of death. And in both cases, excuse me, the children just simply cannot process the imminent danger. And autistic children very often dart out into traffic, and they have no idea of the danger at all. And I'd like to add that that crosswalk there is used not only by Autism Partnership, but by any kids and families in Old Town that are crossing, they're walking over to the Marina Center. So it isn't just the AP students, Autism Partnership students, that are involved. Anyone crossing there is at risk. Please, let's not wait until there's an incident. That's the wrong time. You are all charged with protecting the public health, safety, and welfare. That's it. That's where the rubber meets the road. You can, I mean, sorry, you can beautify Main Street anytime, but if you lose the life of one of our kids, you can never get that back. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leo Byrne. I'd like to echo what Patty Campbell said. I work for the City of Los Angeles Fire Department. I have about 20 years' experience in the field, but more importantly, my son attends Autism Partnership. And like Patty said, a lot of these kids have sensory issues, including my son. He likes to dart. And although they are being watched one-on-one most of the time, it's still a challenging experience to have them on a leash the whole time and watch them. I drop my son off every day that I'm not working, pick him up every day I'm not working, and I've had a few close calls myself, just sitting there watching people with autism and without autism just trying to cross the street to that park. It's very, very dangerous. That's all for today. Thank you for your time.
Carla Watson, Seal Beach. I'm here to speak about the DWP property, which will be coming before the council in June and July. I, of course, am opposed to this EIR. After listening to the deliberations of all the commissions, planning commission, I'm really concerned about, for the commissioners' lack of concern regarding the taking of parkland. I'm also concerned about the project manager who said this was a win-win situation. So I have some questions. What is win-win about using water locks as open space? What is win-win, in good faith, about draping a green tarp across a property so that residents are denied visual access to the river and the sea? What is win-win about threatening to close a road so that residents and visitors will be denied access to the beach and restaurant? And what is win-win about a city having to pay $1 million to this group in order to purchase parkland, which was supposed to be dedicated to the city? This flawed EIR is coming for three commissions, and nine out of 15 commissioners have proposed the development and the EIR. As one commissioner said, to adopt this plan is to reward bad behavior. If this group wanted to develop the property and change the zoning, why didn't they do this years ago? And if this zone change should have occurred, I would hope that the city would be the leader, not the follower. Thank you. I know that you'll be under a lot of time spent looking at all the documents, and I hope that you will continue. Seal Beach has kind of led the county as far as protecting land. We had a mayor of this town who said to the entire, she was the very first mayor, Glenn Forsyce, who came out in favor of the Bolsachica. It was a long fight. We hear this said by people that, oh, we just want to do something about this property. Well, it was a long time in coming because I had one of the first meetings of the Bolsachica group, which was not the land group, it was Amigas Bolsachica at my house, and that occurred in the 1960s. So we're here for a short time, but land is here for a long time, and we must protect it for all of the people to come, not just for a one-year-old to play on it, for all of the citizens who will come, because once it is gone, it is gone. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Sam Hall, and I'm here representing Consolidated Disposal Service, your city's dedicated trash and recycling hauler. Here to basically give you a brief update on some new state legislation that will be taking effect on July 1st of this year. It's AB 341, was signed last year by the governor, and it basically mandates commercial businesses and multifamily dwellings to start recycling if they aren't already. It doesn't apply to everyone. There are some specifics, primarily businesses that generate more than four yards of, more, four cubic yards of trash per week, or multifamilies of five units or more. Basically, four cubic yards is anything more than that standard three-yard dumpster. If you have that more than once a week, then it definitely applies to you. What we're doing as your service provider is taking the responsibility upon ourselves for what the city is required to do in this new legislation. Essentially, the city is required to monitor, basically track who is recycling, who's not recycling, and provide that in the regular reporting to the state. And you're also supposed to educate the business community and the multifamily dwelling property owners. We are doing that. We sent a letter to all of those applicable parties included in their June invoice, and we're also participating with the Seal Beach Chamber to keep businesses updated and educated about the new requirement. And we are personally going to be visiting, and I've already started with a few of the businesses on Main Street, but personally visiting each one of the businesses to identify the best way that they can implement this new requirement. As you are well aware, there are some serious space issues on Main Street, and we're doing what we can to make sure that your business owners are able to meet the state requirements, but at the same time, not lose any of that precious space back there. So we'll also be doing that with the multifamily dwellings and making sure that everybody is up to date. And of course, we'll be providing all the information to your staff as the regular reports are acquired. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those for you, but that's essentially the basis of the new legislation. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I've come before you. I've been hearing stories about the Long Beach bus system, needing their service to Seal Beach. I've been a citizen of this town for over 30 years, and I've taken the bus for most of the time, haven't been able to get around. I'm very upset that the bus system is ending. I guess you guys do what you can to keep it. Each Forsys tells me, it's either side, and I don't know. Do you guys can to keep it? Because I use the bus all the time, weekly. So I guess do what you can to help me. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel. I'm here, I'm a resident, my name's Adam Lydic, I'm a resident of College Park East. I live near Almond. I was on the map there, as you saw. I had two comments. The first one is I called OCTA this afternoon, because I just learned of this this morning. And they indicated that any of those three alternatives that were discussed probably would not be continued into Los Angeles County, which would probably result in all of those 20 lanes, I believe, on the path turning, or it would be 10, 10 lanes turning back to five right as soon as we cross the line. That's, that's the indication that I got from them. And the other thing that I wanted to make a comment about was, I'm a longtime resident, I'm, technically, I'm an original owner, even though I wasn't alive when my parents owned the property. But we pay close attention to that wall and the areas around it, and somehow I missed this. And I know why I missed it, because I'm paying attention to the connector. I'm inundated with, we're going to have a 55-hour closure here, we're going to move the bridge here, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Somehow, this other 405 thing just slipped underneath, probably because it said 405 on it, and I thought they were talking about the 405 connector project, and I just didn't read everything that went by. So I feel kind of shocked that all of a sudden they're talking about adding two extra lanes and knocking down the sound wall, or at least a portion of it. So it seems a little strange to me, and I wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you for your time.
You're either suffering from paranoia, or you're dead on, and it's a rather nefarious scheme.
I'm not sure which is, I'll leave it up to you.
[laughing]. Svetta Fielding, good evening, Mayor and Honorable Counsel. I've come here tonight to talk about the bus situation. I know that Long Beach Transit is giving us a kind of a hard time about where they're going to come or where they're going to come into Seal Beach. I don't know if you're aware, but there are a lot of elderly people that use the bus system. The Orange County Transit does not go into Long Beach. Therefore, anyone going to St. Mary's Hospital, Memorial Hospital, or the VA Hospital has to go on the Long Beach Transit system. So when you're going over the facts and trying to make your decision of where the bus is going to go, I hope you realize that there's quite a few people in town that do use this to go into Long Beach. Your dial-a-ride will not go into the Long Beach Transit system. They only do three miles. So when you're figuring out how you're going to solve this problem, I hope that you understand that there are a lot of people, especially senior citizens, that have to use the bus to get to hospitals in Long Beach. Thank you.
Victor Gergis, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to reiterate what Paul basically said. There are faces behind this decision, people who need this service desperately. It's important to remember that a person like Paul and others cannot travel from Main Street all the way to Seaport Village to catch 131 to downtown Long Beach easily. It's a very difficult transit for someone like him. I know there's been some issues between Long Beach Transit and the city concerning bus routes and the size of the bus. I'd like to remind the council that the buses are now mandated to be taken out of service because of air quality control measures. So the diesel passports no longer will be available, and the only buses that will be available will be natural gas-powered buses, which by definition are quieter. I urge the council to, to take an opportunity to sit down with Long Beach Transit. I know that Jill has already met with staff at Long Beach Transit, but I don't think a decision has been made. I know that Long Beach is planning to pull the service out, okay? They're already starting to set up their bus routes to eliminate Seal Beach as a destination. And it's not just Long Beach people that benefit from this bus system, it's our people that benefit from this bus system and the connection to Main Street. I think it's also important to recognize that the service is provided for free to Seal Beach, and in many communities, they charge for that service. I think they're doing it as a good gesture, good neighbor gesture to the city. They've been good neighbors in the past, as you know, from the LaMataj incident. I would strongly urge you to take the opportunity to reconsider and to work with Long Beach Transit to try to get that system put back in place where people can get access to it that really, really need it. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Members, it's Mr. Fisher, Seal Beach resident. On the bus issue, I was at the information town hall meeting with the transit people, and it was my understanding from our response, and I think there's some people here who, tonight, who were at that meeting, that they were not going to pull the service. They gave us several options. Most of us didn't want it changed to come all the way down Ocean and make additional stops. We wanted to maintain the current stops, and just they had to figure a way to make the turnaround because the passport bus is small enough to turn around in that Marina Center, you know, Seaport Village. There's a giant parking lot. I can't believe they can't find a way to draw lines in there to make the bus turnaround. And then the next thing I'm aware of is they're just going to stop having the service come through there. You know, we didn't, nobody said stop it, they just said, don't add another one. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. It seemed like overwhelmingly, people wanted to maintain status quo. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Shirley Bissar, senior consulting pastor, sworn to the associates. Father, I want to start this meeting because as this council has taken their seats tonight, you also took your seat with us. And I'm in an arena where the separation of church and state has been passed over to all of us, and some of us has bought that bill of goods as if you don't see what happens in the state and in the church. So as I speak tonight, I ask that you give these people listening ears and those who are looking on by television, give them listening ears and hearts in Jesus' name. You have before you, hopefully was passed on to you, just some memos that I have written about the proposed housing element. I believe there is a necessity first that I apologize to you. I believe over the last two, three months since I have returned to speaking before you, I have demonstrated anger, what Jim Lewis calls passion, and that has not come across marketable socially. I also want you to know that when I came to the city proposing that the city take on this issue of homelessness as a project, my life is threatened, but not by people in this room. But because you are representative, the governing body of this city, I took for granted that those people who did threaten my life were friends of yours and business colleagues of yours, and I would ask that you go to some of these people that you see every day and ask them where their comments made. I forgive them, and I ask that you accept my apology because I have no anger about you or toward you. I have an assignment, and my assignment, I thought, was just for the city, but as I have found out, different cities are also adopting the same housing element for certification, and I have been invited to do houses, housing homeless missions in various cities who also have the same issue. Individually, pastorially, and from a religious base, I believe part of what my assignment is calling upon is that I educate God's view concerning homeless issues. We have both an individual mandate, and that is irrespective to any title that we may hold in any public office, and then we have a church mandate. If you attended a church service on yesterday, then that faith can only be carried out Monday through Saturday. If you're Jewish, then it's Sunday through the following Saturday. Our faith will not be demonstrated in any synagogue or church building where we may attend for an hour at a time. It is shown now. This is where... Skid row will only grow if no one else is participating. The cities have to collect and connect with one another.
Time.
You have in your hand a memo. I would like you to read this memo both individually and as corporate officers of this city, and my prayers for us continues.
Good evening, Mayor, staff. Robert Goldberg, Seal Beach. I'd like to talk about the vehicle replacement and maintenance program that's on the agenda tonight. There's really two of the recommendations I'd like to talk about. One has to do with replacement of vehicles, how often we replace vehicles, and the other has to do with policies regarding vehicle assignment and home garaging. First of all, we did have a presentation from the consultant on this issue, and we didn't have the staff report at that time. Now we have the staff report, and the staff report is really very excellent. I was really impressed with the quality of the analysis in that staff report. And the staff report makes a lot of recommendations. The one that's really pressing is, how many vehicles are we going to replace in the next fiscal year? At the workshop we had, the consultant mentioned that 20 of the vehicles currently meet either the age and/or the mileage criteria that she recommended. And it sounded like from that workshop that that was kind of the bottom-line recommendation from her and her report. But when you read the report, actually, that's really not the case. If you read the report, and specifically, recommendation number two, which is on page 11, that recommendation is that we do an individualized assessment of the condition of each vehicle before replacing it. And the criteria of 10 years and 100,000 miles is really just an initial screening criteria for selecting the vehicles that should undergo this more thorough evaluation. And in fact, the report goes on to give two pages of a scoring system that's really terrific, a qualitative scoring system, to evaluate whether the useful life of that vehicle can be economically extended without replacing it. And I'm afraid that staff kind of wants to shortcut that recommendation. In the staff report that you have, basically, they're asking you to just adopt the mileage and age criteria for determining replacement. And again, if you read this report, that's really not the recommendation of the consultant. And unfortunately, the consultant does mention later in the report that the absence of vehicle life-to-date maintenance and repair history reports make it almost impossible to evaluate when a vehicle should be replaced. And that's the unfortunate thing, is that we haven't had the staff time or the resources, apparently, to collect repair data and downtime data and other information to make informed decisions about most of the vehicles. But the consultant recommends that going forward that we collect this, and again, I strongly support that. But what I would recommend is, instead of basically signing a $1 million check and authorizing the purchase of 20 vehicles, which actually, if you include the sewer fund and the water fund, it's almost $1.25 million of vehicle purchases that would happen if you just use the simple table. What I'd recommend is have staff maybe come back with a handful of vehicles, a subset that are clearly ready for the junkyard, and I'm sure they know a few of them, where the downtime's been such, the repair bills have been so high, that everyone can agree that these are really junkers that need to be replaced. And that's fine, go ahead and replace those now. But direct staff to expend the resources to keep repair records and the other data that this report recommends, so that a year from now, when we do the budget in the following year, we can come back with better data and do what this report says, which is analyze various factors, such as the condition and the repair records and the downtime, and make informed decisions. That's really the recommendation of the consultant and the most cost-effective thing, rather than just go and spend $1 million or $1.25 million now. The second issue that I'd like to talk about is, the report notes on page 18 that the city is currently deficient in not having a written policy regarding how vehicles are assigned, who gets vehicles, and who gets to drive their vehicles home, which is called home garaging. And home garaging is a very sensitive issue to a lot of taxpayers, allowing an individual to have a city credit card to buy gas and drive that vehicle home, even if they're not using it for any other purposes. It's an issue of concern to taxpayers. And so is the overall number of vehicles. We have 73 vehicles for about 100 full-time staff members, and is that number appropriate, not appropriate? I don't know. But there should be a policy regarding who gets a vehicle in the city and who gets to drive it home. And the consultant in recommendation number five, the consultant says, we need to develop a policy, and I agree. And what the consultant recommends is that that policy be developed by city staff. I don't have any problem with that, but what I'd like to recommend is that city staff draft the policy, and then that policy come before the council and the public for final approval, so that we can have, we can know what's going on, who's home garaging to have some input. So those are the two suggestions I would make. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishes it'd come before the council? See no one else? Yes? All right. Took you a while to decide.
I completely agree with Robert, of course, he's magnificent. But what I was interested in speaking on is Seal Way has no recycling. And the gentleman that I spoke to, Sam Hall, was not aware of that. I haul my recycling to Cal State Long Beach, and the lady next to me back there takes hers to Rosmore, to the parks for the kids at the high school. But if there was someplace at the end of each block where we could have a large bin to at least put newspapers, because there's still a lot of people out there that get newspapers, I know at 4:30 in the morning, I see the little van delivering down the street by me, and there's a very large bin at my house that I have to haul it, and it would be really nice if we could have, maybe we don't have enough room for the recycled trash bins on every house or every apartment, but we do have someplace that we could put newspapers, and it really is a waste, because I know the house next to me has seven large trash cans, and at least three of them are filled with newspapers that they're just throwing away. And I really would like that, to have something done on that. I know the gentleman was very receptive. He wasn't aware, but we get extra trash pickup during the week. We get two. Does everyone in the city get two? We get two, because we get Monday, and we get Thursday, because we have so much trash. So it just would seem reasonable if they could recycle, maybe we wouldn't have quite as much to throw away. And it's a finite world, and our kids... I have a new grandson, you have to think about the next generation. Thank you.
Can I ask a question, please? Nancy, can I ask a question? If there are seven trash bins next door to you, why couldn't some of those be recycle bins?
They could.
Because I have a recycle bin.
We don't have any recycle bins. We all put our own trash cans out. We don't get anything like that.
That's very interesting. I only get once a week pickup, too.
We get Monday, and we get Thursday, and we usually get the first pickup. They come about a little after 7:00, I think, that they come down our alley. And they pick up furniture, they pick up all kinds of things, because, believe me, the people, we have a lot of dumpster divers that come early, or they come late.
Well, everybody has those.
We especially do, because you'll see vacuums, you'll see all kinds of things out there. But it's just a real waste.
Well, actually, I think we get them more, because we have the recycle bins, and that's what they're looking for, is to go through the recycle bins. But we'll look into that, huh? I'd like to have that...
Because it's a waste, of all the newspapers especially.
Okay, thank you.
I've never heard anybody compete over who has more dumpster divers in their neighborhood. But yeah, Jill, would you check in with Consolidated? And if they don't have a dumpster now, find out if it's feasible for them to install them there? Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I know they'd be filled instantly with empty beverage containers, but that's fine. No one else? All right. Oral communication is closed. Mr. City Attorney.
I'll report tonight.
The city manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think on behalf of the comments that were made tonight regarding Long Beach Bus Transit, just wanted to comment briefly and make sure that it's clear to the public that this was in no way a decision. Obviously, you know as the council, it was not a council decision, wasn't a staff decision, nor do we support Long Beach Transit's decision to remove all bus service in Seal Beach. And I think unfortunately, timing was an issue, based on the scheduling of the public meeting that was held last month. It didn't give us an opportunity, on behalf of the city, to get the word out primarily to the users of the service. And so unfortunately, what happened is you had primarily residents along Marina Drive and in that vicinity that attended that meeting and were in opposition to the extension of that route. And unfortunately, I think it was a quick reactionary and rather emotional decision that Long Beach Bus Transit made in response to that meeting. I have met with them personally, which all of you know. Unfortunately, they were not willing at that time to retract their decision to remove all bus service in Seal Beach. What they were willing to do, though, was to work with us, along with OCTA. When they implement the bus service change in August, I believe it's August 26, and they've committed that there will be a seamless transition in terms of extensions and connections to ensure that the people that are currently using that service will be able to use the service to get to work, their doctor's appointments, and so on. But I'm not willing to take that decision as final, and it was a, I think Sean was with me at the meeting, I think it was a good meeting, they understand what our situation is, and I think we'll continue to work with them, we'll see what happens as we work together with them in moving forward with those extensions. But I at least wanted to comment so the public, it's clear, because I think there's been a little miscommunication on the other side as well, and when phone calls are made, that this was our decision. I think, again, that was just a reaction to extreme opposition that was, that Long Beach Transit, their staff encountered at that meeting, and I think from their perspective, as they indicated in the letter that they sent to me, as well as they reiterated to me personally, is they didn't want to be in the middle of a situation where they were being pitted against residents who didn't want the extension of that route along Marina versus the users of that service. So I at least wanted to make sure, at least for now, that it's clear, and we'll continue to work with them. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. I just wanted, Jill, have we ever talked to the board?
We haven't yet, no.
But after tonight's appeal, we're going to?
I'd be happy to.
Perhaps we can enlist the assistance of the people who were here this evening, and have them go along with us when we go to the board. Council comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I would like to invite everyone to join us for a groundbreaking ceremony to celebrate the start of the Studebaker Road Ramp Improvement Project. The event will be held this Wednesday, June 13, at Edison Park, beginning at 10:00 a.m. As you may recall, this project will improve the Studebaker Road Ramp at the intersection of College Park Drive, which has had traffic congestion issues since College Park West was constructed in the 1960s. So come out and celebrate with us as we commemorate this very important project. There might even be free cookies, I don't know.
Just to clarify the bus situation, what came out at the meeting, basically, was that no one was opposed to the present bus route in the city. What's that? What's that?
We weren't informed.
Well, I might add that the notifications were sent out before the city staff or the city council...
Only in a certain area.
What's that?
Only in a certain area. We had provided on that side of Main Street.
Basically, the new route was going to be down Marina, which was going to affect River Beach and Bridgeport. And there was really no reason to affect the existing route. But I don't want to start having bad guys here, because I'd like to see something come about to retain it, but I think the object was to come in with the idea to probably save money. I can't prove that, but I think the idea was that they wanted to do something, because there was a history of the city being opposed to buses going down Marina. And that was, came about when they redid the bus, the bridge on Marina, that was one of the reasons, and of changing the bus route to what it is now. So, anyway, I think the staff is aware of this, and they'll do everything, and I think the council should do everything they can to maintain the bus route we now have.
Pardon me? Nothing?
Nothing.
He's saving it all up.
I have a couple of things. First, I would like to address the bus issue. It was Long Beach City Transit that called the meeting and noticed the meeting. It was not a Seal Beach City meeting. It was not a Seal Beach City decision. Seal Beach has done everything that it can to try and keep the transit. It was a Long Beach Transit decision, not ours. Our city manager has gone out of her way to engage them and try to get that reinstated. Basically, when the residents said they did not want an additional line, Long Beach said, then we're pulling them all out. And it was a very sad day for those who need public transportation. And, okay, but what we're going to do is, we are going to do the very best we can to make sure that public transportation comes into and through Seal Beach for all of our residents. Okay? So we're working on it. The next thing I'd like to say is that school is going to be out on the 14th, and our public works director has worked very closely with the school district in order to set up the construction time to begin repaving streets. And we will be doing District 3, Gordon's Area, on Bolsa and Balboa, and in Old Town we'll be doing... think the council should do everything they can to, to maintain the bus route we now have.
Pardon me? Nothing? Nothing.
He's saving it all up. Um, I have a couple of things. First, I would like to address the, the bus issue. It was, uh, Long Beach City Transit that called the meeting and noticed the meeting. It was not a Seal Beach City meeting. It was not a Seal Beach City decision. Seal Beach has done everything that it can to try and keep the transit. It was a Long Beach Transit decision, not ours. Our City Manager has gone out of her way to engage them and try to get that reinstated. Basically, when the residents said they did not want an additional line, Long Beach said, then we're pulling them all out. And it was, um, a, a very sad day for those who need public transportation.
We're all still.
And, okay, but what we're going to do is we are going to do the very best we can to make sure that public transportation comes into and through Seal Beach for all of our residents. Okay? So, we're working on it. The next thing I'd like to say is that, um, school is going to be out on the 14th and our Public Works Director has worked very closely with the school district in order to set up the construction time to begin repaving streets. And, uh, we will be doing, um, District Three, Gordon's Area, uh, on Bolsa and Balboa, and in Old Town, we'll be doing landings. So, uh, starting the week of the 18th, you can look for repaving in, of those streets. It'll be done just as quickly as possible so that, uh, summer school won't be disrupted and, uh, it'll begin in June and be completed in July. The second thing I have to say, or I guess now the third thing, is that in Old Town, the concrete schedule is, uh, going quickly. We are replacing the broken and uneven concrete that met the criteria in the report and we're three quarters of the way through. And, uh, finally, what a special day to have the Special Olympic torch run through our town and down Main Street, uh, to begin the Special Olympics last Friday. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Um, the State of California Housing Element Law mandates that local governments must adequately plan to meet the existing and projected housing needs of the community in all economic levels. Included in the state law is a requirement that local governments adopt land use plans and regulatory systems that provide opportunities for and do not unduly constrain housing development. The state also requires a housing element to be updated and certified every five years to reflect the most recent trends in demographics and employment that may affect the existing and future housing demand and supply. Well, I have some very good news to report tonight. The City Council received a letter from the California Department of Housing and Community Development notifying the city that the housing element that was adopted by council on April 9th this year is in full compliance with state housing element law. Along with being compliant, certification by the state means that the city now meets specific requirements for several state funding programs designed to reward local governments for compliance with state housing element law. Finally, I would like to thank my fellow council members, the Planning Commission, the Ad-Hoc General Plan, Local Coastal Plan Advisory Committee, city staff, and especially the community for all your hard work, which has resulted in certification by the state. That is one heck of an accomplishment and we deserve it. We have no council items tonight. The consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with exception of items previously removed by council.
Move it.
Move, move approval except for Items C, D, and E. Second.
All vote. Five oh.
Okay. Um, I can just address Item C. My concern on Item C is unfortunately, we probably will, would start the project the same day they take the Seal Beach Bridge out. So what I'd like to see is some way to delay that project for a week or so. This last week, we had the Valley View Bridge was out all weekend and there was no significant impact on Lamson, I could tell. So it's just really a caution, I think, in talking to Sean today, that if we get started and we stop the project, we're out a certain amount of money if it really becomes a big issue. And I see no reason to really start it or, or confirm our participation in the project till the end of June, once we have a, a week or so to, to see. And I don't know how that works. Sean says the bids are outstanding for 60 days, so that would give us, right, be right up to the 60-day limit. I would propose that, uh, the K-rail that Patty Campbell suggested, that during the interim period, we could go ahead and put that in because Sean had indicated that would be the first thing that would go in before any landscaping was done and, uh, hopefully the landscaping will cover, cover the K-rail with, with eventually bushes or something like that. So I really don't know exactly, Sean, or Quinn, how, how I could propose to delay the project or, or approve the contract but hold on to the contract, or, or what do you recommend?
The recommended action could be to, uh, defer this item until July, but authorize staff to move forward with the installation of the K-rail now.
That, that would be what I would recommend. Is, is that a motion then? That, that's a motion. To approve, subject to that qualification.
Second.
Thank you.
Five oh.
Could, could I ask one question on the K-rail? And the only reason I, I ask the question, Sean, is originally when we were going to do the Lamson 405 wall, they were going to put K-rail up, but then all of a sudden they had to put big bags of, big barrels of sand at the beginning and end of that. I don't know why, but that's what they said. I assume we could coordinate with a tree or something? If, if we have to do that?
Sure, yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Soft tree.
Yeah, big tree. Mosswood tree.
Just so I'm clear, this is going to come back the second meeting of July?
Okay, thank you very much.
Item D.
Item D is, uh, the pavement management plan. I can just, I think I, I, I can just handle that unless you want to have it presented. I, I just have a couple of comments on it.
It's at your pleasure.
Okay, I'll just try to cover it then myself. I spoke with Sean today and there are several, and I, I did a spot check, really, I looked at my, my street, just as a reference point, and I looked at ironwood because of it, they had changed the, the PCI. And I found some inconsistencies in the numbers, like PCIs in one area were different than PCIs in another area. And the, um, start date on the, on the, like, slurry seal was two years difference between two different sections. So I'm just saying, I, I definitely say we should approve this tonight, I'm just saying that staff should go back through and look at it. And another thing I noticed, I mentioned to Sean, was the pavement ma, the, uh, the CIP calls for a hundred thousand dollars of expenditures on slurry seals and, and like the first year, we only had thirty-two thousand, so it's something he's going to look into again. But I think the, the point is the pavement management plan, I definitely would recommend we approve it tonight, but I, I definitely think staff needs to go back through it and make some corrections. I think we've had to do that in past years, too. The other thing I want to point out is that with the slurry seal project and also the resurfacing project, like this year, we, we had the slurry seal project and we added the, uh, a couple of new streets to the, not new streets, but streets that weren't previously going to be done, as well as a parking lot for the slurry seal program. And to the, to the, um, resurfacing project, we added pavers and the problem was the council didn't see these type of changes until it had already been bid. And so, uh, I would like to see those type of, I'd like to see the, the plan each year come to the council so, because we have plans change during a year, we have funding availability changes, the need changes sometimes between the projects. And even tonight, we have agenda item F, which we've passed, already passed through. But if you look at agenda item F, it, it would be definitely not consistent with the plans that are in the pavement management plan. If that were, if we were to get the grant, the pavement plan, the pavement management plan would, uh, immediately be incorrect or not correct, and not incorrect, but not as planned. So the only thing I'm proposing is that, that, that we direct staff, that even though we approve the pavement management plan, before they go out to bid to bring the pavement plan, this is how we did it in the past years, bring the pavement man, pavement management plan back to the council for a review and approval before they go out to bid, rather than bringing it to us. And if there's something that we, it puts undue pressure on us to approve something that, that we may not have approved. As an example, on the pavers, I would have liked to have a little more information about it before I just approved it that night. So my, my request is that we, we make it clear that, that before, before the staff takes and goes out for bid, that we approve the streets that are being done at that particular pro, that particular program.
Can I ask a question, please? How, how is it usually done?
It's alternated back and forth, um, over the past few years and, uh, Council Miller, Miller's correct, probably in about 2008, 2009, these projects were, uh, policy was, it was brought forward to the council to request authorization to begin bidding. And so for the past few years, it has been that way. This year, we expanded the pavement management program, actually in the last pavement management program, and included a list of the future streets that were going to, going to be receiving slurry seal treatments, local paving and arterial paving. Uh, additionally, we prepared a master plan of concrete improvements that outlayed a five-year, uh, improvement program to those. So with those master planning and those programs, uh, we stopped begin, bringing the projects to the city council for approval before, uh, beginning the bidding process for those construction projects. But we bid.
Why?
I'm sorry?
Why?
Well, it was stopped because of the, the master planning process had so, so much detail as to what the future plans of the city were. So it, it's really an efficiency to deliver those, those projects. We have such a high load of projects that bringing it back to council just adds, uh, a whole nother report and, and, uh, weeks before we can, we can actually begin the project. So the thought was to outlay it in the master plans. If, if it's the, the desire of the council, absolutely, we can bring it back.
Yeah, and I would also say 2008, that was when we, we found some errors and, and made some corrections that we found out in the process. We reviewed the design and all that before going out to bid and we made a major change and went out, I think we made almost four hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements that year or more. And the other thing is in College Park East, where you review the design and the specs before they go out to bid. In our case, it's very important because we had the full depth recommendation and, and the traditional approach is more ideal, but I, hopefully, we will stay with the traditional approach. But again, the, the streets may change and, and even as I said, if we get the grants tonight, the pavement management plan's out of date already. I mean, it's, it's not, you can't stay with the pavement management plan anymore.
Oh, so Gary, you're asking to see it every year, is that, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know.
No, my proposal was, and this is how we did it before 2011, is they would present the plans, they would say they were presenting the plans and specifications, and these are the streets we're going to do, and then the council would approve it or not approve it, council would make adjustments to it, and then they would go out for bid and they would come back. What happens now is they take the master plan and they, um, go on out to bid with it. And then they bring it to us for approval and we're getting it after the fact. So if we want to make changes, then they have to go out for a bid again and it, it puts a lot of pressure on to just go ahead and accept it. And I think to do my due diligence, I'd rather have it before it goes out to bid.
So previous to 2008, every single project before the bidding began was brought to the city council and, um, was presented prior to the bidding even starting. Now with the master planning being expanded to include all of the list of the streets as they were going to receive any type of treatment, then that process was cut short and the approval of plan and specs happened with the award, with the award of the bid. But, uh, it's, it's a procedural, uh, does the council need to see the, the, the project after the master plan's accepted before it goes out to bid?
How often do we get a master plan done?
Well, for the pavement management, it's done every two years. So that details all the slur, our slurry seal program, our local paving program and , um, our arterial paving. And, um, if that grant is received, which I anticipate it would be, we would, our primary recommendation is to forward, uh, the streets from the pavement management and then in two years, we would update the pavement management with a whole new list of streets. So that's something that we could bring, uh, after that project to council if we were able to fa, to forward all the, both-year streets in the first year, we could bring forward, um, a list of new candidate streets to present to the council if it's council's desire.
So it is out of date then right away as soon as we?
Right, if we were able to receive additional funds and, and forward all the streets and we would come forward with new streets to, to discuss with the council.
Uh, I think the only thing it does, it puts one more step in it, that they have to bring the, the planned streets for slurry seal and the planned streets, streets for , uh, resurfacing, they have to bring it to the council before it goes out to bid. That's just the, the only step it's adding. But the council's approving it at that point. With that, I, I, I don't know if I have to make a proposal or...
Would that defeat the purpose of the pavement management plan as a whole? If you, if you bring it to us piecemeal?
Well, pavement management is required, uh, as a condition for eligibility for the measurement program, so we'd still be doing that regardless.
Yeah, I just don't want to undermine the pavement management plan. I think that what we've got going is a really good, good thing. And when we looked at it as a whole, we saw it's working for us very well. So I, I don't mind, uh, Gary, if you wanted to make a motion on that, I don't mind that. I, I just want to be sure we're not undercutting the, uh, pavement management plan.
Historically, we haven't really undercut it. I, I think we've made changes to it where we've decided we'd rather do it a different way a year later, but, or two years later in some cases. I mean, what you're doing, what you ju, what you're getting ready to do right now was looked at in the summer of 2010. So tw, it's, you know, the economics have changed and, and some of the streets have changed. And in your case, with the slurry seal, somewhere along the way, somebody made the decision that we should just take some of the money we were going to do street slurry seal with and go and, and do a slurry seal in the parking lot. Not that I'm saying it was good, bad, or otherwise. I mean, that decision was made and by the time it came to us, it came to us in the form of, we've bid it and here it is. There was no justification or no reasoning for why we did the parking lot, which I'm sure there was a good reason, but it just, it never came to the council.
Well, the funding for the parking lot was approved in a separate part of the budget. So it wasn't in the capital, it was in the, the maintenance and operations fund. So the city council did approve, uh, slurry seal of that parking lot with the...
Well, we may approve, approve a line item, but we didn't discuss it. I mean, that's the problem with the budget anyway, we just approved line items and we really don't know about the projects in detail. Again, it's my, it's, it's my proposal that, that any project like slurry seal or, or resurfacing project, that it come out of a pavement management plan before it goes out to bid, the council receives it and approves it before it goes out to bid. That's my proposal.
That's your motion?
Yeah, that's my motion.
All right. Second it? I'll second it.
Okay, I, I'd just like to ask another question then. I, I'm just concerned because I'm not really that clear on what we're doing. Um, so, um, what, what staff's feeling on this? I mean, how does this change your operation?
Well, I think Sean indicated it's an efficiency issue for us. It allows us to move forward. I guess my hesitation would be that we've, we've spent the time and effort on this master planning document that by, um, bringing it back, I would ask that the council just have, um, some respect for that process and that document, that we're not opening up that planning document each and every time we come back to you, um, for approval to go out to bid, that it's not, um, in, the council, you know, have the, you, the jurisdiction to make changes to that document. I think our hesitation is, is that it's going to open up a discussion on the actual document, um, each time we would come forward for authorization to go out to bid. Well, then that would completely undermine the document.
Okay, well, I see it's a slippery slope, but...
But I would, I would only say that prior to 2010 and the previous years, it always came back to the council and we were doing pavement management plans, so...
But not master plans, right?
It's the same thing. It was a pavement management plan, it was a master plan. It was, it's the same thing you have here. So it, it didn't change at, at all. It's just a question of do we want to look at it before it goes out to bid? And it doesn't, it doesn't, it does, it's, it's a new, it's a new process that Sean basically started, I guess, as, as the Public Works Director, that he preferred just to take the master plan and go out for it. Again, it, you could say it another way, if you make any deviations to the pavement management plan, you must bring it back to council before you go out for a bid.
I like that a lot better.
Okay, well, we, we, would you not agree? I will say the pavers get to be a little bit, and we really didn't deviate that much because sidewalks are sidewalks and pavers are pavers, but the, the, that's fine. If you want, I, I've, I've...
More comfortable with that.
Okay. I changed my proposal.
And we can communicate to, that with you when we're going out to bid on these projects as we typically do in our weekly public works updates, that we're going out to bid because in essence, you're going to see it again when we come to you to ask you to award the bid. So even if there's concerns at that point, even though we're looking, you know, to hopefully move forward on a project and you have concerns, um, we can address it at that time.
If you're, if you're a good reader.
I'll help you, I'll help you with that.
Thank you. I propose what Elrie said, that if there's any changes to the pavement management plan, that it come to council before going out to bid.
Now, do you want to second that mic or do you want me to?
I'll go ahead and, I will second my, my second on that one.
Second, you're second.
All right. I'll vote. Very good. Isn't that carrying unanimous?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Shanks would like to have a five-minute break. Mayor, before we take that break?
Yes?
About the motion to approve the plan. Because that motion only was to, uh, I make a motion to approve the plan.
You're right.
Second.
Or do you want to change it?
I was just going to explain the, the requested action, uh, within the staff report. What you have is, is an, a submittal for a measurement eligibility package, so staff is requesting submittal of that package. Two of the items that are requested within that package are approval of a pavement management program and a CIP that details the transportation-related projects, um, to go forward over the next, I think it's seven years.
Vote.
That's the motion.
Second.
And that passes and we're at recess.
As I mentioned, on May 30th, uh, to do this project, we reviewed a variety of documents. We conducted interviews with staff and customers. We spent some time on site. In particular, we spent quite a bit of time, uh, reviewing and, and meeting with some of the parking control officers to gain a clear understanding of how they go about their work. And then we also applied best practices related to not only vehicle replacement, but also in this case, vehicle maintenance. also, in this case, vehicle maintenance. And finally, we developed some criteria and researched alternatives for vehicles which might suit the needs for parking control in the city of Steel Beach. Just as a reminder, your fleet consists of approximately 96 units. 76 of them are vehicles ranging from sedans, light-duty pickup trucks, heavy-duty equipment, patrol cars, things like that. The remaining 20 still need to be maintained. There are things like pumps and compressors and trailers, but they don't actually drive anywhere. And as I reported on the 30th, the current replacement value, if you were to try to replace all of these vehicles and equipment at once, which we would not recommend, is approximately $3.4 million. When we looked at fleet maintenance, I felt it important to let you know, we did take a look at alternative service delivery options, whether or not it was feasible to outsource or privatize fleet maintenance. That is something that some agencies are certainly looking at in a time of fiscal constraint. And based upon our analysis, that is not something that we would recommend for you. The size and complexity of your fleet is frankly too large to be handled by the local repair shops you have close by. Geographically, you're also kind of isolated as a community. You're located too far away from the fleet maintenance facilities of your neighboring cities, Long Beach, Westminster, Huntington Beach. And so it doesn't make service sharing or contracting with those other agencies a viable option. Your fleet maintenance facility is actually very well-sized, and with adequate staffing and equipment, provides you with the most efficient manner by, of maintaining the vehicles in the fleet that you have. And so we're recommending that you continue to maintain your fleet yourself as opposed to trying to contract or outsource that out. In terms of fleet maintenance, it is entirely funded by the city's general fund at this point, and as you may recall, you had one full-time mechanic that retired in December of 2010. Since that time, the city has retained a temporary agency to provide a part-time mechanic 32 hours a week that allows fleet maintenance to occur only on Mondays through Thursdays during business hours, which does, as we learned, present somewhat of a customer service challenge for departments on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, particularly those public safety departments that have vehicles operating during that time. I think, as I mentioned, on May 30th, there's actually a quantitative model to determine how many maintenance hours are required based upon the size and complexity of your fleet. We actually took the city's fleet inventory, ran it through that quantitative model, and determined based upon that, that you actually have enough work just in fleet maintenance for one and a half full-time equivalent positions. Currently, you have .75 through the temporary agency. And so in order to provide responsive customer service, one of the things that we are recommending is that you hire one full-time mechanic to perform that function and reduce your part-time mechanic through the temporary agency to 20 hours per week. This would allow fleet maintenance activities to be expanded to Monday through Friday. In addition, these are just some other key recommendations from our report. There are too many for me to go into in great detail, but we did recommend that you establish some basic fleet management policies. In our report, I believe we suggested that you procure the policies in place in other surrounding communities, and then have staff work on customizing them to meet the specific or unique needs of your community. One of our important recommendations to improve the efficiency of your fleet maintenance operations is that you invest in some basic equipment that will allow the fleet maintenance staff to do what they need to do. The equipment includes an above-ground lift, a wheel balancer machine, some automotive diagnostic equipment, a brake lathe, and a vacuum next to the car wash, as an example. The estimated cost for all of that equipment is about $35,000. What you may not know is that your prior full-time mechanic, before he retired, was using his own equipment, and when he retired, his equipment went with him. And so since that time, you've really relied upon whatever your part-time temp agency mechanic could provide. We're suggesting that it's important for you to invest in some basic equipment to make your staff more efficient with their maintenance activities. As part of our recommendations, we're also suggesting that you implement a more rigorous preventive maintenance program. If you want to keep your vehicles longer, as you know, preventive maintenance is pretty important, and our report identifies some very specific guidelines for preventive maintenance that your staff might consider following. To make sure that you have adequate coverage, particularly when workloads are very high or during those off-hours on weekends and evenings, we've recommended that you establish contracts to perform preventive maintenance and emergency repairs with local vendors as needed. We've already, we talked about the need to improve record-keeping and information systems to make it easier for you to measure and manage the fleet maintenance operation. And then finally, we've recommended that you conduct some further cost analysis and establish a charge-back system for departments utilizing vehicles. Like vehicle replacement, the reason why we recommend a charge-back program is twofold. Number one, experience shows us that departments who have to pay for the vehicles that they're assigned out of their operating budgets do a better job caring for them and, and being good stewards of those assets. In addition, another advantage of, of having a charge-back system is that it, it helps you more accurately reflect the true costs of various programs, including those overhead costs such as vehicle maintenance. Currently, for example, if you look at the police department's budget or the Parks and Recreation budget, the cost of the, the cost associated with having and maintaining those vehicles is not reflected as a program cost. Having a charge-back system helps make that a little more transparent and accurate. And finally, I said finally before, sorry about that. Finally, we've recommended a variety of performance measures that, that the staff begin to monitor and measure. These are some examples: preventive maintenance repair, downtime, repeat repairs, parts inventory, fuel management. We're also recommending that the fleet maintenance operation gather feedback from its primary customers on a regular basis so that they can make improvements based upon that customer perspective. Are there any questions about the fleet maintenance component of the report?
Yes, I, I have a few. Without the needed record-keeping in, from the past, the vehicles that you have recommended be replaced this year, what criteria have been used?
In our report, we identified that there are 20 vehicles that just based upon the age and mileage criteria exceed those standards. In our report, we also recommended that, or suggested, that replacing 20 vehicles plus the sewer and water fund vehicles all at one time may be logistically difficult because of the amount of work involved in making that happen, as well as economically difficult. So we did recommend that further analysis be done. Our report did not mean to imply that there was no record-keeping. What we did find, though, was that record-keeping was inconsistent. There are some vehicles where there's more records about maintenance than others, and so we're not saying there's no record-keeping, we're just saying it's inconsistent. So typically, what would happen, in addition to reviewing the records, we'd have, suggest that the mechanic do a very close inspection of the particular vehicle, and using some of the criteria that we've included in our report in that weighted, or that point scale, make a determination as to whether or not a vehicle might be able to be retained a little longer.
In your experience, how long would it take for a mechanic to do an evaluation on an automobile?
I'd say that a couple of hours, two, three hours. It depends on how much record, how much records are actually available for that particular vehicle. Basically, it's a visual inspection, looking under the hood, as well as looking at whatever records or data are available.
So we're looking at 40 to 60 hours to look at the 20 vehicles?
Potentially. Yeah, and again, we, because replacing 20 vehicles all at once would be a pretty big task, it's not something we'd say, I, I don't think our recommendation in our report says go out and purchase 20 vehicles. It just says you need to be aware that there are 20 vehicles that based on these criteria may be overdue.
Right, yeah, okay. One other question I have, which isn't directly related to maintenance, is did you find that our fleet size was appropriate to our needs?
We did not do a full fleet utilization study that looked at the size of, in terms of the number of vehicles available. That was not part of this particular project. We were instead asked to look specifically at replacement practices and maintenance practices. So we did not do a utilization study which would look at the assignments of vehicles, the workload of each of the departments who have been assigned vehicles to determine whether or not they have the right number. That was beyond the scope of this particular project.
Okay, so we don't know if we have too many police cars, too few police cars, too few of anything, or too many?
Not based upon our study, no.
Okay, thank you.
Do most cities allocate and break out the cost and put to their general budget for gasoline and maintenance costs? Is it, is it standard practice, or, I mean, it's somewhat of a bookkeeping overload in the sense to staff work time to do that when you do that, but I just wondered whether that is standard or non-standard?
It's considered to be a prudent business practice to fully allocate and identify the costs associated with that overhead, just as it's not uncommon, for example, for cities to have a cost allocation plan for facilities maintenance based upon the building space that's occupied by a given department. It's not uncommon for a city to have a cost allocation plan for contributions to workers' compensation costs or other insurance costs based upon the number of employees and the actuarial history of the employees in that department. So is it, it's, it's, I would say it's a more common practice than an uncommon practice.
As far as the charge-back system, I, I know the upsides, but what are the downsides to the program?
The downsides of the charge-back system are initially, to establish it, there is some staff work and accounting work involved. A good cost allocation plan, if, after that initial investment of time and energy, can be fairly easy to administer, depending upon the formulas that are used to allocate those costs. I'd say probably one of the most significant downsides of a charge-back system is that to the extent that departments and you as policymakers are making choices about programs and services, in the absence of a charge-back system, well, in the absence of a charge-back system, you are making decisions without necessarily recognizing all of the indirect overhead costs that are, that have to be done as part of doing the business. With a charge-back system, sometimes departments will object to increases in costs associated with vehicles or insurance because they don't feel like they can really control them. And so sometimes you get some pushback from departments, particularly as costs rise because they feel like they're having to choose between expanding or maintaining programs and services and paying for some of these necessary overhead costs.
Yeah, I have a few questions. With regard to the 32 hours that we were receiving for the last year and a half, that was inadequate. What was not being done that should have been done?
One of the areas that we found some deficiency in is the extent of preventive maintenance work. Only cursory preventive maintenance is being done, in part just because 32 hours isn't enough week, time to do it all. In addition, we were hearing reports from departments, as well as some tracking from departments, that it was taking an inordinately amount of, amount of time to get a vehicle back once it was taken in for a repair.
When, when you have like a new car, and I know we've just purchased a new, a couple new police cars, you have a warranty now, and we have to maintain records. Have we been doing that?
Depends on the vehicle. The part-time, it depends on the vehicle, sir. The part-time employee has primarily been hired to do mechanic work, and record-keeping has not always been a consistent thing that he's been able to get to. Again, this is really not intended to be the fault of the staff replaced blame, but it is a consequence of not having adequate resources allocated.
So we may, we may not be in violation of some of our warranties. However, we don't have that many new cars, I guess.
You haven't purchased any new cars recently, where I would be a concern.
Let me ask you this, with regard to the, I guess I wasn't so concerned about the idea that no mechanics were available on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, because our police, police department has surplus cars. The only ones I worry about, maybe the lifeguards don't have surplus vehicles, because those two agencies to me are the most important agencies. The others are, you know, they're something else to be driven, probably. I, I don't know if there's been an issue where we've not had police cars on weekends or not. There has been?
Councilmember Miller, there's been situations where we have specific vehicles. As an example, the watch commander's vehicle, which has specific equipment in it for a supervisor. And as an example, that car would maybe get a nail in a tire on a Thursday evening, which could essentially put that car out of service until Monday or Tuesday of the following week. And we have had a problem with those kinds of situations.
Okay, and for the most part, you answered my question when you told me about the mechanic taking his equipment and leaving, because that looked like somebody was opening a gift store, you know, I need one of these, I need one of those.
It was his own equipment, sir.
And I also noticed, and this probably won't be your question, but I have a couple more I want to ask you. It was brought to our attention that in 2008, we said the, the lifeguard boat would cost $100,000, and now we're saying in this document, it's going to be a half a million. And that, that impacts the, the fund flow for the next so many years.
From the start, it was $500,000, from the very beginning of that.
So the $100,000 was incorrect?
I don't remember ever seeing that.
Well, I think, wasn't it $500,000 last year that you wanted, and we said no boat, and you came back with a $100,000 repair?
$27,000 repair, but...
I don't know where the $100,000 came from.
I, I don't know where the $100,000 came from either, I haven't heard that number. From the start with Vince Mastro.
I think I can address that number. That number was included in a 2008, I believe, fleet management plan, and I don't know the...
Origin.
The origin of how that number was estimated, but everything I've seen since has been $500,000.
Okay, and back to the, the plan, that could be interpreted that you were saying buy 20 new vehicles. It missed the whole point system because we couldn't implement the point system because we didn't have the adequate history. And I guess I was thinking that it may be most important to do the police department and the lifeguards, and while we develop a history in the short term, that we go on a pay-as-you-go, you know, until we get enough history to know which ones, so we can... You have to realize, I'm a person that has cars with 150,000 miles, 135,000, so I drive them till they die and I give them away. So it's a different approach, but you can't have that for the police department, you can't have that for the lifeguards, there's no doubt. One of the things I noticed is that we didn't do a whole lot of discussion about the lease option. There was a mention on page 13 about the fact if inflation were higher than the interest rates, it may be a good time to go ahead and, and borrow the money rather than invest your money. And it seems like that scenario we're in right now. Inflation's higher than the interest rates, and it seems like we should be leasing rather than, than buying, maybe.
I think it also depends upon the type of vehicle you're referring to. Typically, we don't see lease purchases of things like patrol cars because they have a more intense utilization. But for example, if you needed a new general pool car, sedan-type, then that might be a lease purchase option. I think as we mentioned in the report, there may be certain types of more expensive or specialized equipment, fire engines, which doesn't apply to you, but in some communities, they may consider trying to do a lease purchase of a fire engine, in part to address the impact of that one unit on the overall vehicle replacement fund. That may be, I'm not, I don't think you can lease purchase, I don't know if you can lease purchase a boat, but you could as a matter of policy decide that you want to exclude the boat from the vehicle replacement plan and fund that as a pay-as-you-go option at the time that it needs to be replaced.
When you were doing the review, did you find any, any particular maintenance vehicle that we don't use very often that we could go out and lease rather than have one sitting just waiting for need? I, I know we like to, we use the tractors to clean the beach, but I mean, some other equipment I noted, and that, we may not use all the time.
Again, that would be part of a more detailed fleet utilization study that would look at more, we did identify in the inventory what the current mileage was, but we did not, it was beyond the scope to look at what the odometer reading history has been to be able to answer that question for you.
Okay, how about like procurement, I guess it's one of the policies we could develop, a procurement policy where we not only look at maybe the most efficient cars with the best maintenance records, but also with standard purchases so that if we, the fleet of staff cars are all Ford Focus or something, I don't know, pick it, pick one, but so that we have standardization, so that we have standardization of parts and such as that. Is that, I didn't, if that was covered, I missed it when I read it.
Again, that is not something that we... Again, that is not something that we particularly directly addressed. I think it is a practice, though, that's worth pursuing. The Southwest model works in other areas. One of the things that we find particularly when a vehicle that's been in utilization for some time, staff develops an expertise about maintaining that vehicle, has the right tools and equipment to maintain it effectively. So the extent that you can standardize and maintain that staff expertise and consistency of maintenance equipment, that is a good thing to do. There may be some types of equipment, though, where that's not possible.
I guess one of the things I saw in reading the report, because I was still convinced necessarily that we need to have a supervisor, a mechanic type, but I would expect that supervisor, although I think I read and heard that necessarily, someone heard that maybe necessarily wouldn't be a good reportkeeper, that would be the person that should know the reports and keep status among the documents, I would think, and not documentation, I mean.
We, we did, sir, include in our report some opportunities to improve overall oversight and management of the fleet operation, if not by the mechanics, then on a supervisory level.
Yeah, and I know I read, and this is more for the city manager, but I know I read that there was committees to do this and committees to do that, and I don't know that we have the staff to do all the committee work over this. To implement this program, it looks like it's been quite expensive.
I believe we only suggested perhaps one committee, and that, what we see in some agencies is a committee of representatives consisting of the primary customer departments along with the department who's responsible for fleet maintenance coming together to work out, make recommendations about fleet replacement and maintenance from the perspective of the organization as a whole. It's not intended to be an overly time-consuming process, but it does provide an opportunity for the key customers who have vehicles that they use to have input into fleet management policies that may ultimately affect them.
One last question. With regard to the, the chargeback you were suggesting, did that include the operating costs? Like if you get an oil change, some time goes back against the budget of that department?
There are organizations that have a chargeback system that includes basically a tiered rate. One level of the tier is the replacement cost, another level of the tier is based upon the maintenance cost, and the third level of the tier is based upon mileage. So it's, there is a mechanism to combine them. It depends upon how complicated and complex you want it to be.
To me, unless you do that part of it, if you just stick with the cap, the cost of the machine, the equipment, you're really just doing a numbers game because it's coming out of the general fund, and it just seems like there's no incentive for anybody to maintain or keep the costs down.
You're correct that the majority of the funding for a vehicle replacement plan based upon the current allocation of vehicles would be general fund. The question is whether it's a direct transfer from the general fund, which is something that hasn't occurred, and we've recommended you need to start thinking about, or whether it's a general fund transfer from department operating budgets into the vehicle replacement fund. Either, either way, it's a policy decision that you need to make for the best interests of your organization. What we are saying, though, is that unless you start paying attention to the vehicle replacement fund, ultimately you will run out of money and you will absolutely be on a pay-as-you-go program, which is what you were on before 2008.
Thank you.
I think I'm all right. I was looking at Joe's boat. How's the boat doing, Joe?
It's all set and ready to go this summer. It looks great, new paint job, all the cracks are fixed, and the holes in the bottom underneath the engine are all sealed up and everything's looking good.
Good. And, and I see that you've got it in there for replacement, or at least they do for 2015, but I think we'll be good to go beyond that, don't you think?
Well, it's a good question. I know when we looked at it last year, it was, I told the council that it would be good for three or four years, but in fact, we think it's one of our greatest tools, and it's one of the best-built boats there is, and it is 35-odd years old, but we hope to keep it for a lot longer, but.
Especially given that they don't make them anymore.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Before moving to the right, try vehicle analysis, maybe I might jump in with a few comments. Prior to coming forward with a vehicle purchase, we'd like to do an analysis based on the scoring sheet. As soon as we can build some history on some of these, this record-keeping that, that hasn't been happening, so we would bring that forward. And then the goal beyond this year would be to bring that analysis with the budget every year. So we would, we would bring a scoring and then bring recommendations in the budget season, and then that could be considered with the budget every year. Another item in this year's budget is the equipment services supervisor. If that position is budgeted within this year's upcoming budget, we are looking at the, the proper title and responsibilities for that position. It's likely to be some sort of fleet manager position, somebody that manages that function of the city. We would bring that revised class specification back to the city council for approval with, with some of the other positions that were approved in the budget this year. And finally, in regards to committees, you know, we do do that on several other functions of the city. One prime example is IT. You know, we have our IT vendor meet with representatives in some different cities. We try to do it quarterly to review some of the functions as to how they can improve the different users of the, of the city. So having fleet maintenance meet with some of the users, is a pretty typical, typical thing.
You said two things of interest to me. One, if you have a fleet manager, is he going to be willing to change your oil? I'd hate to have a guy who pushes paper and not changes their oil. How would you say?
Or she.
Oh, excuse me.
The term, the term manager would refer to manager of a program. So they would be all-encompassing doing that entire fleet program. So it would be everything from, you know, turning wrenches to maintaining records to doing all those sorts of things.
You said one other thing. It sounds like I'm talking about the pavement management plan again, but it's still your intention then to bring every vehicle to the council for approval?
We would do that during, this year we would bring a separate item, but in the future, we would do that during the budget season, yes.
But what you want to replace, you'd bring it to the council and justify the replacement with your number system or whatever you ultimately decide to use.
Well, if the council would like it to be brought, again, absolutely, but I was.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't going to go out and buy a million dollars of the vehicles and just say, here they are.
I think, I think.
The anticipation would be to bring the scoring sheet with all the evaluations at the time the budget's being prepared.
I'm not being facetious. $260,000 were bought without approval, in my opinion. So that's a good idea. I appreciate that. That's, that was one of my concerns about the program. The other part is the, the street sweeping, with the vehicles that we have now, if we buy these new vehicles, are any of those vehicles able to transfer into the other departments for staff-type work?
Can you clarify for me what you mean by street sweeping vehicles? You're talking about.
They're just trucks, I think.
The parking control vehicles?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Okay, so that's another thing we can maybe reduce costs by doing that.
Actually, our recommendation is that if you want me to move into parking control, real quickly, our recommendation is you currently have three Ford Rangers that are left-side drives, your typical Ford truck that anyone on the street would be able to buy. And actually, that's been in place for quite some time. I don't need to go through that. You've had those left-drive vehicles since 2007. Prior to that, you had apparently some right-drive vehicles. When you made the conversion, when that policy decision was made in 2007, it inherently changed the way that parking enforcement could be conducted. So prior to 2007, with a right-drive vehicle, you could have one person following behind the street sweeper and checking and issuing citations from the right-hand side. Now you have to have two people in each of those Ford Rangers to do parking control, one to drive and one to either chalk or get out and put the citation on the windshield. And so this, that's one of the reasons why we were, we were asked to look at the vehicle utilization just for parking control, and we found that it, it is not necessarily the most efficient way to provide that type of service. It also results in fewer citations being able to be written than if you had one person per, per vehicle. And the parking control officers get called to respond to citizen requests. In addition to parking control, sometimes those requests don't require two people to handle, but because you have two people in a vehicle, you have two people responding. So before we looked at what the alternatives were, we established some criteria for evaluating vehicle options. We always think it's a good idea to establish the criteria first and then see what's out there. In this particular case, based upon the workload and based upon what the staff need to do, we recommended and identified that two of those three Ford Rangers might be good to replace to be right-drive capable. So that would allow parking and street sweeping enforcement to be done by one person per vehicle instead of two. We also identified that regardless the vehicles need to be able to support a light bar on top, like you have on a police vehicle, and have adequate storage for basic either parking enforcement supplies or in some cases, traffic control supplies. The third criteria that we looked at, or criterion that we looked at, was that at least one vehicle needed to be capable of transporting property and evidence items. There's one parking control officer that does that type of transport 50% of his time, so one of the vehicles still needs to be able to do that. And finally, an important criteria, given the topography of Seal Beach, is that all of the vehicles needed to have speed limits at or exceeding 45 miles per hour so that they could drive on Seal Beach Boulevard safely. In applying those criteria, we identified five possibilities. The Jeep Wrangler Unlimited, the Go4 Interceptor, the Firefly, the CT Micro Car, and the Gem ES. All of these vehicles have right-drive or at least center-drive capability, and that's one of the reasons why we focused on them initially. I do have pictures.
Was that the chief's favorite there?
This is the chief's favorite, the Jeep Wrangler. You'll see in a moment, it's our favorite too, and our recommendation. This particular vehicle is currently in use in a number of places, including Long Beach. Has 14 right-drive Jeep Wranglers that it's using for parking enforcement with a very good track record. I think the chief was able to negotiate a temporary loan of one to test it out here in Seal Beach and found, the staff found it to be pretty effective. This is a Go4 Interceptor. This is a three-wheel vehicle. This is a Firefly, and the CT Micro Car, and then the Gem ES, which seems to be more like a glorified golf cart in some ways. When you apply those four criteria, only the Jeep Wrangler meets all four. Only the Wrangler and the Firefly have top speeds of at least 45 miles per hour, which would make them safe on Seal Beach Boulevard. The, we did some checking on the Firefly. We would never recommend a vehicle unless there's a track record that we can document. We learned that the Firefly is pretty new to the market. There's actually only one in use in the entire country in Seattle, Washington. And we also did some research on even the availability of the other vehicles. Neither of them are available for a variety of reasons. So really, your only option, and our recommendation, is that you replace two of the Ford Rangers with right-drive Jeep Wranglers for parking enforcement, primarily in Old Town and the street sweeping zones. That you retain the third Ford Ranger, presumably the lowest mileage one, for parking enforcement along Main Street, the adjacent metered lots, and the beach lots, because what we learned when we did our analysis is most of the parking enforcement in those areas is, is being done on foot. So a vehicle is used to move the employee from the police department to the lot or Main Street, and once they're there, they're on foot. So we're recommending replacing two of the three vehicles with Jeep Wranglers. And obviously, those two Ford Rangers could be recycled elsewhere into the fleet where they might be useful. And with that concludes my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
The Jeep Wrangler is notorious for having really poor gas mileage, and when you're driving that at 15 miles an hour in first or second gear, we're going to be supporting standard oil if we took on something like that. I used to have a Jeep Wrangler. I got rid of it because I was averaging 14 miles to the gallon. There's got to be something out there that's got a more economical drivetrain.
There really isn't with that kind of drive capacity. We looked at everything we could find. Either it's too new to have been tested, it's, there are a couple of vehicles that are electric, so they're very economical, but they don't go fast enough. And so unfortunately, we did scour the market to see if there would be something economical. The more economic cars do not come with, with, with right-drive capability, unfortunately. And in some senses, Mayor, it's a trade-off. You're spending more than you need to on parking enforcement right now because you have to have two people in the, in the vehicle. So the loss in fuel efficiency may be more than offset by not having to have two people in the vehicle.
And the, and I think, it might have been a Jeep that post office used for all those years. They're no longer available?
No.
Okay, I move to approve the 2012 fleet management report, adopt, I mean, adopt the 2012 fleet management report and adopt the analysis of fleet for parking control.
Second.
If I could just indicate before you vote, as Sean indicated, given that we don't have the history to defend coming to you for purchases on this, this year, we will come to you for authorization to purchase vehicles and with the intent that next year, once this plan is in place, we'll be able to do, to do that through the budget process.
Thank you.
And that passes 5-0. On to the public hearing. The time and place for public hearing for the consideration of Resolution Number 6263 confirming the diagram assessment and levying assessments for street lighting district number one for fiscal year 2012. May I have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our interim finance director, Shelly Lynn, will introduce this item, and I believe we have consultants that are with us tonight to address your questions as well. Shelly?
May I have a counsel? This item is listed for street lighting district number one. The council has, on the May of 14, council meeting, the council adopted resolution initial, the annual levy of assessment, a resolution approving the engineering report, and resolution of intention setting the date for the public hearings on the June 11. And this particular hearings will be allowing the, the public to providing the information and input. If they have any questions, they can do it in the, in the advance, in writing, and the consultant here is able to provide the answering questions. So I will be introducing the Weldon Consulting Services, Beatrice, and Kentis, and they both are here for the hearings and answering questions.
You get off easy.
They had to come and sit through the whole thing. How's that easy?
Mayor, if I could, this is a public hearing, so you'll still need to open it and, for the public, and close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
At the same time. Public hearing is now open for public comment. Public hearing is now open for public comment. Seeing none?
Mayor, before there's any motion for a record, there has not been a majority protest in this matter. And so that should be reflected in the minutes. We can take action now.
Well, that's the understatement of the day.
I'd move that we adopt Resolution Number 6263 confirming the diagram assessment and levying assessments to the street lighting district number one.
Second. All vote. Passes 5-0. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. Now we have the successor agency matters. I hereby call the successor agency to order. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Passes 5-0. Minutes of the successor agency to the Seal Beach Redevelopment Agency meeting of May 14, 2012, approved by minute order. The successor agency will now recess to a closed session.
I'm the mayor, actually chairman. Before we do that, there's no need for the closed session tonight. So you can.
Hold me that earlier, yeah. All right.
So you can adjourn both meetings.
With no objection, the city council and the successor agency will adjourn to Monday, May 25, at 6:00 p.m. or 5:00 p.m. if necessary. Thank you and good night.